9:30, I'll call the meeting to order and the first item of business is adoption of the agenda, Councilor Palmer.
Moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Mayberry, resolved that the agenda be approved.
So any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Having adopted the agenda, are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof? Councilor Martin.
Thank you, Warden Ryan, through you. I, Councilor Bernia Martin, declare a pecuniary interest related to item 8.2.1 on the opened meeting agenda of October 23rd, 2024 because of the following reasons. I'm a part owner of a tourism-based business in Blanford, Blenheim, Oxford County.
Are there any other disclosures of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof? Not seeing any. Adoption of the council minutes of the previous meeting, Councilor Tate.
Moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Mayberry, resolve that the council minutes of October 9th, 2024 be adopted.
So any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And public meetings, Councilor Schaefer.
Thank you, Warden, through you. Moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Palmer, resolve the council rise and go into a public meeting pursuant to the Planning Act and let the warden share the public meeting.
So any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And Director Michaels, I will turn it over to you for your presentation.
The applications before council are proposing the development of a 229-unit plan of subdivision with a mix of units ranging from single families, semis, and multiples in apartments on a 13.3 hectare parcel of land in the village of Norwich. The majority of the lands will remain designated low-density and open space, which they currently are in the official plan. The only exceptions to that are the proposed apartment block, which is be re-designated to a medium density with special policies to allow for the apartment units with somewhat increased height from four stories to six in density. And open space designations proposed for the significant woodland that's currently located in the northeast corner of the property. I'll go to the different one there. Which is kind of, oop, kind of shown there. That's the, that's the significant woodland, so that would be re-designated open space. And as well, there's a block to the north of this property, which is actually located outside of the settlement boundary, which would be re-designated open space as well to recognize a natural heritage restoration project that's required as part of the development. The zoning bylaw that's accompanying this application would rezone the property to a variety of residential and open space uses to recognize the proposed uses in the plan of subdivision. It would also include holding provisions for confirmation of servicing capacity for each phase of the development as it proceeds. The lands are located in the northwest corner of the village of Norwich, west of, excuse me. North of Main Street West, which is to the very, it's actually off the screen to the bottom here, and is the main east-west thoroughfare through the village. Surrounding land uses include low-density residential to the east, which is an existing single-family detached subdivision. To the north is the conservation area, which is outside the settlement boundary. To the north and west are agricultural lands, again, outside of the settlement boundary. And to the south is an existing industrial use with, I guess, industrial mall-type uses on the property, also owned by the applicants. As indicated, a total of 229 units are proposed, which would represent an overall density of approximately 32 units per hectare, which is in keeping what council's direction has been for density and serviced village areas. We've been in the, sort of, the 30 units per hectare range as a target. This includes 81 single-family dwellings, so the majority of the land area is single-family dwellings. But there's also five blocks for semis and multiples, and a block for apartment units, and that will be two six-story buildings comprising a total of 136 units. So, over 50% of the units in this development are something other than single-detached dwelling types. Access will be provided via the extension of Bailey and Mary Streets, which are the streets, actually should, regarding, and on this plate, north is actually to the west or left of the, of the, of the plate, which was different than the previous one that was up on the screen, where it's to the north. But Bailey's the street here, and Mary is the street here. So those will be extended into the subdivision along with four new local streets to provide access to the proposed development, which will be in phases. The existing single, or significant woodland in the northeast corner will be preserved as part of this development, along with a buffer area around it, and it will be merged with the Conservation Authority lands to the north of this property. The adjacent block to the north, which I mentioned, will be used for a natural heritage restoration project, and that was identified through the environmental review done for the subdivision, and will provide additional habitat for blending turtles, which are an endangered species. So that would satisfy, satisfy the requirements of both the Conservation Authority and the Ministry of the Environment. The woodland block and the deeper single-detached lots along the easterly side of this development will provide a buffer and transition between the existing single-detached lots to the east and the denser development in this, in this proposed development to the west, including the apartment block. The apartment block itself is located towards the westerly end of the development, so furthest away from existing single-detached dwellings in the, in the existing village. And we think that separation, together with the intervening large-low-density lots, provides sufficient separation from existing single-detached to avoid any compatibility concerns. As well, the block is located near a park block, stormwater management block, and surrounded by roads, which also provides separation and transitioning to future low-density uses within the subdivision itself. The stormwater management blocks and park blocks at the south end of the development serve both the development as well as a buffer from the industrial lands to the south, so they kind of provide that, that separation distance from that existing industrial use to avoid compatibility issues. In support of the application, a number of technical studies have been submitted, including a planning justification report, traffic impact study, environmental impact study, functional servicing report, archaeological study. So, a number of technical reports submitted to, to support the development, and there's been a fair amount of back and forth over the years to work through the issues identified through those reports, including the environmental issues. These have all now been addressed through the subdivision design and the draft plan conditions. We have received written concerns from a number of neighbors with respect to such matters as traffic, height, density, compatibility, and drainage. But from a staff perspective, we feel those have been addressed through the subdivision design and the conditions of draft plan approval, as well as the supporting studies. Norwich Council's recommended support of the OPA and the subdivision, and has approved in principle the associated zoning bylaw amendment. So in summary, it's the opinion of planning staff that these applications can be supported as they will provide a range and choice of housing units in the village, will make efficient use of land within the village, will protect environmental features, and meet the requirements of the provincial policy statement and official plan, and we are recommending approval of the subdivision and the attached OPA. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those now.
Thank you. Questions from council on the report? Councilor Petrie.
Thank you, Warden, through you. I just want to make sure that the wetland designation is not going to be used for any stormwater management within the regulated area.
Yeah, through the warden. That's correct. The, the new block to the north of the development is strictly for a reconstructed wetland habitat. It is not for stormwater management purposes. The stormwater management facilities in the southeast of the proposed development.
Right, thank you.
Any other questions on the report? Is the applicant here, do they wish to speak to their application? When you're done, I'm just going to get you to sign in there.
Do we have those?
We had sent in a presentation, I'm not sure if staff have that or not. It's here? Okay.
Warden Council, I'm Mike Gerv, I'm representative from Stubbies. I was long here with Brandon Fleming, our planning agent from GSP Group. Quickly go through this as the director of planning already did a good job explaining it. So, what's the next page? So basically quickly to figure, do a quick overview who Stubbies is. I'm sure probably many of you do. We're based, a family-based company out of Bran County, just on the outskirts of Norwich Township. Yeah, really started out in the agriculture, and then, over time, really started focusing in a little bit of developing, but also pre-cast what we're most known for. The next slide is, yeah. Also, part of Stubbies, we do believe in, yeah, community involvement, giving back to the community. We're, yeah, we see that trying to be part of, a good community partner, whereas it's from helping build splash pads, skate parks, sponsoring community time, or community center time, and stuff like that. Just, yeah, feel that, being part of, or being in the community, you also got to be a part of it and be community, good community members. So then I'll hand this off now to Brandon.
Thanks, Mike. Good after, good, good morning, not afternoon yet. I'm Brandon Fleming from GSP Group, and I'll quickly go through this presentation. I think Mr. Michaels did a good job of, of highlighting what, what we're here for. So we know the location of the subject property. The parcel itself is total about 12.6 hectares in area. The application itself, again, just to quickly reiterate, proposing 81 single-detached lots for future single-detached development, four semi-detached and duplex blocks, one block for a fourplex specifically, and then a medium-density apartment block, inclusive of 10% affordable units. There's a park block and a future wetland block, as we, as we spoke about, as well as stormwater management and future road, street connections as required. Just to show a little bit more of what the subdivision looks like, this slide shows a couple important pieces. One is the phasing of the subdivision, and how it can be broke down into, to sort of bite-sized chunks to develop over time, as well as just some representative images of the types of homes that would be built here, as well as, you know, just the park space and the wetland. And we'll get into the apartment, the medium-density block, a little more detail on those in the next slides. Just quickly, the official plan amendment as requested. So the map, you know, there's, there's really three components to this. I didn't exactly do this map perfectly, but there's a low-density residential component, there's the medium-density block outlined in blue. But up here is actually a retained woodlot block, and then this is the wetland block. So, really, these, these two areas shouldn't be outlined as low-density residential, they're, they're open space and not intended for development. The zoning bylaw amendment, we, we were at Township Council with a successful recommendation for, for approval. Fairly straightforward zoning request, couple site specifics requested in terms of maximum lot coverage, the minimum lot area required per dwelling unit, as well as looking for an increase in the maximum building height for the medium-density block, and then a slight reduction in the parking rate from 1.5 spaces per unit to 1.4. Just in this context, what is medium-density? Shown on the, on the screen in front of you today is a sample rendering of what the building would look like, so a six-story building. It's, it's a Stubbies pre-cast product. There, what's the term? Fast? Fast track. It's intended to be, you know, you have the plan, you're able to, to build it and bring it to market in, in short order when the appropriate approvals are in place. The site itself, you can see, you know, there's lots of green space, there's, there's open amenity areas for the residents, you know, there's, there's ample room for parking and landscaping, really trying to provide a place that, that people want to live, more than, you know, this is just not an apartment block in a parking lot. It really is a, it's intended to have a community-type feel and amenities that are going to draw the residents to the, to the area and want, and want to stay there and, you know, be involved in the community. This was just previously, we were at the Land Division Committee to add this block for the, the wetland. As noted, that is really intended to be wetland habitat only, it's not, it does not serve a stormwater management function. On the screen, I think Mr. Michaels did a good job. These are all the, all the supporting studies that go into this, and as council well knows, there's, there's a lot of background work that goes into these applications before they, before they end up here in front of you. So, it's always, it's always good to sort of reflect on what has gone into bringing this application forward. So that's kind of it in a nutshell, but certainly Mike and I are here, we were at the Township Council meeting as well. We heard the concerns of, of the residents at that time. Certainly think a lot of their concerns can be addressed through the detailed draft plan conditions and the detailed design of the subdivision. Things like stormwater management and, you know, those types of elements really get cleaned up and, and the finalized dotted and t's crossed through the, the detailed design of the subdivision. But there's, there's conditions requiring that that gets done. So we're confident with the draft plan conditions, we'll address those concerns, and we're in support of the staff report and the, the recommendations and the, the conditions of draft approval. So, with that, Mike and I are just here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Questions from council for the applicant? Councilor Schaefer, then Councilor Martin.
Thank you, Warden, through you. Thank you, Brandon. With regard to the apartment buildings, what type of mix, will they be one and two bedrooms type thing? And will, and this building, will it be something similar to the one that was approved for Tillsenberg just recently?
Yeah, so that's our intent, be something similar, but also, yeah, we have to do a market study, because it might be more two bedrooms in this market versus one bedroom, but, yeah, that's the intent, is do something similar to what we are doing in Tillsenberg.
Councilor Martin.
Thank you, Warden Ryan, through you. 31 acres, this is a big project. Can you give me an idea of timeline? Is this a two-year build, a five-year build, 15-year build? Is there a phase one, two, three, from low-density to medium-density?
So, yeah, there is a phased approach, and I believe there's, Oxford County, the Public Works also has some stipulations, a place for wastewater and stuff like that. So basically, yeah, there will be a phased approach. Is it five years, is it 10 years? Also, the market plays into that as well as what service capacity is. So the plan is, there is, will be a phased approach. But timeline, yeah, it all comes down to market conditions as well, what sanitary capacity is in the town of Norwich.
Councilor Mayberry.
Thank you. Just curious on the, if you, if you take the 33 acres, you take out the wetlands, the streets, all that sort of stuff, do you have any idea what the net density residential unit per acre is? So, if you take all of the extraneous material out first, what is, how many homes are we actually getting on the agricultural land there?
Just let me read the fine print here, I think I do have that answer. You know, I don't have it actually broken down now, we can certainly provide that. It's within the parameters of what the official plan would look for in terms of low-density development for a subdivision like this. The, the medium-density block obviously helps to increase the total units per hectare.
So if you, if you took the gross numbers, it'd be about seven units per acre, 229 divided by 30, 33, whatever. So, not particularly good, but if you remove all the extra out of it, I think it does, it does improve it. I would just encourage us to always be looking for, for ways to actually maximize that as well. So, thank you.
Any other questions from council for the applicant? Not seeing any, thanks. Are there any members of the public, either here in person or online, who wish to speak to the application? You can come on up. You can come on up and speak, and when you're done, I'm going to ask you to sign in over there when you're, thank you.
My name is Annette Levine. I reside at 41 Spring Street. Our property actually backs on to the new proposed subdivision. I do have a couple of things that I'd like to speak to. One is drainage, and the other one is traffic in regards to the apartment building that's being proposed. I'm not here, sorry, I think I'm moving some things around here, or maybe somebody else. I'm not here just speaking for ourselves, I'm here speaking on behalf of Spring Street. These are the residents of Spring Street, from one end of the street to the other, even including up through the cul-de-sac, where the subdivision actually will not go, but the traffic is going to impact the small street. Spring Street is 60 houses on a small, little, short cul-de-sac. And we have approximately 120 cars or more on our street, because every single person that lives there, except for about five seniors, have two vehicles, some have three, some have four even, because their children live at home and drive. So, that's a lot of traffic for our little street already. And there's going to, we always knew there was going to be building at the back, we always knew there was going to be a street be extended through Bailey Street and Mary Street, but these are tiny little side streets that just go and end at Center Street. They don't go anywhere. So all the traffic either has to come up Spring Street, which will be the number one, because it's the closest, or Center Street, which is also a dead-end street with 60 houses on it. The only other option for them to go out to Main Street, to get into town, would be to go up North Court, which is, actually does go up through Stover Street. They have four stop signs to get to Stover Street. It's 40 kilometers, then it's 20 kilometers to get there, to go into town, because there is a children's park, a children's splash pad in that tiny little community as well. And we're talking a lot of traffic. So, the proposed development of, we're not opposing, you know, development, the housing, those, that's understood, right? We all, majority of us knew that was coming. But the proposed application of the apartment building of 136 dwellings currently, from what the map shows, is that all the traffic coming from the medium-density right now is showing coming out and going through our street. So we're talking 231 units phased in from 2026 to 2031, that is what the plan shows We have families that have lived on that street for 20 some-odd years. This is an established, older neighborhood. This is not a new subdivision that's being extended. We have families living on our street with children, and it breaks my heart. I watch them walk to the bus stop in front of our street every morning with their coffees and their children, and see them biking up and down our street with their tricycles and learning how to ride their bikes. And we're going to put hundreds of cars through that street? Seriously, it makes me tear up. And I don't even have children on the street, my children live elsewhere. People live there, they move there for that. In the document that came out from the Development Planning Office, I think from Amy Hartley to Norwich Council, the report was number CP 2024-309, community planning dated October 8th. There's a section in there, one paragraph starts, section 6.23, talks about medium-density residential areas. Underneath that paragraph, and I did submit this already to the clerk, to council clerk, it says, "Developments proposed for medium-density residential areas requires an amendment to the official plan subject to the following criteria. The property abuts a major road, such as a county road or provincial highway, or will be situated such that movements from the site do not flow through any adjoining low-density residential areas." So the current plan, again, does not show any road that abuts the proposed medium-density block 87 of 136 apartments units to the main road, Main Street. The plan has all traffic currently showing going from the low-density that is currently being built and the existing low-density of our street and, as well as Center Street, which are low-density existing residential units, and all that traffic currently is showing that it would be coming through our street. We are a low-residential neighborhood. What is the proposed plan for the traffic flow from the two-six-story apartment buildings of 136 units? And, we're talking 300-plus vehicles, because again, there's no public transportation. There's no way for these people to get around without driving. And most families have two cars, because where they work, they work further away. So that is one concern. Or I should say, two concerns now. Construction traffic. Also, this is phased in from next year to 2031. Where is this construction traffic going to go? Again, we're a cul-de-sac. Families, children, biking. Obviously, the safety is a huge concern, the noise, the disruption, the mess. Now, the applicant owns the adjoining lands to the subdivision that abuts the main road of Main Street. Is it possible for the construction traffic to be routed through this property for the safety of our road? And the residents that've lived there for 24, 25 years have their homes built on the And the second thing that we wanted to address, and we did speak to council in Norwich last week as well, is drainage. I mean, they speak to drainage, stormwater management, we haven't seen the plan, obviously, because we don't get that documentation. But there's a natural dry creek bed that runs behind our property, which is number 41, south to Main Street, doesn't run all the way to Main Street, it runs approximately down to number 17, the gentleman that's over here. And this runs into a pond, they call it a pond. So, when it rains heavily in the spring and the fall, and we have lots of thunderstorms in the summertime, this becomes water. And this drains south and goes into that pond so that we do not flood, because the land behind us is higher than we are. So, right behind our property, we have it, and we, along that whole site, it's all trees, beautiful 30, 40-foot trees that they're planning to cut down to accommodate these lots behind us. And once that gets filled in, where's this water going to go? It's going to go onto our properties, as well as several of our properties, including ours. Some pumps under, go underground and drains into this area. So what are our options going to be to make sure that we're not flooding someone else's property, especially the one being built, if they become level with us? They're still going to flood the new houses if that happens, and they don't do with drainage, like, right behind those houses. Currently, I don't see anything in the plan in regards to that drainage, because again, we don't get that documentation. Any questions?
Thank you. Questions for the resident from council? Council Petrie.
Can I ask staff a question, Warden?
I think I'm going to suggest we hold the questions for staff until we're done, and we get a motion on the floor, and then we can, Council- I think I'm gonna suggest we hold the questions for staff until we're done, and we get a motion on the floor, and then we can, counsel. Question, Counsel Mabry.
Just curious, uh, can you tell us where the dry, I'm still trying to figure out where this dry creek goes?
So we're number forty-one.
Fine. It's going...
Sorry, we're west.
Yes.
Right? And it runs south.
Okay.
Behind our house and about thirteen houses going down to the left.
Okay, thank you.
If you're facing our street.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Like our, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't forget to sign in. Are there any other members of the public here in person? You can come on up.
My name's Larry Grizzles. I live on Seventeenth Spring Street in Norwich. I'm the lowest house on that street. You come down from Main Street, you come down to a gully. You come from up Spring Street, down, on the very lowest one. I lived there for seventy-five years. I never had a sub-pump in my house. Last year, Stubby put a, the new subdivision, the new hub warehouse behind me, I had to put a sub-pump in last year. Now, my basement don't have a drain, because it was built in nineteen fifty-three. Township of Norwich put a, uh, off-drain back there twenty years ago, that's what they tell me, it's been twenty years ago. I have three-quarters of an acre. It cost me five grand for that off-drain to come in, to help the water, because it always comes through my yard. Come out of the back bush when the heavy rain comes, right across. There used to be a drain there, but they put this new off-drain in, they put it upstream, uphill. Water don't run uphill. So they dug a ditch for the water to run up there. The first year they put that drain in, I got flooded out, I lost ten thousand dollars of tools on my shop. The neighbors around me, we picked up seventeen truckloads of cornstalks in the middle of the road. Township didn't come down and clean them up. I talked to the drainage guy, what they're doing now, because that off-drain is gone. It was by the railroad tracks, Stubby put it in the middle of the parking lot, then they moved it from there and buried it. And yesterday, they built up the burn behind me, like they got a dike, you wanna call it, like a creek that runs up to up Spring Street to the off-drain, which is supposed to be going down to the creek. Well, that little ditch they got there, if we really get a, like a heavy rain, four-day rain, it's not gonna hold the water. Because it's only topsoil. It'll eventually get washed out. It'll come in my yard. My drain I had there is gone. Why did I pay five thousand dollars for it? Yeah? It's, we're saying, I, I'm gonna get all the water. And I, I'm asking, where do I go if, if I get flooded out? I asked the engineer last week about that, and he said, "Well, it's built more stronger than it was twenty years ago." That's my concern, is the water that's gonna come down through there. Because it comes right down, that pond you stumbled fills up, it comes right down. Now he built this burn for the water to go in his thing. Okay, so what about the water that's, on this side of that burn, it's gonna run right down to my place. Where's it gonna go? Can't go anymore, because they built it up this way. So it's a dead end here. Where's the water gonna go? Right through my yard again. That's all I have to say about it.
Thank you. Um, hold on one second. I just wanna see if council has any questions. Any questions for the speaker? All right, thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak to the application? Sorry? Oh. No problem. Um, so I'll just ask again, are there any other members of the public either here, uh, in person or online who wish to speak to the application? Not seeing any. Um, Counsel Palmer.
Two. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Schaefer. Resolve that council adjourn the public meeting and reconvene as Oxford County Council with the warden in the chair.
Is there any discussion? Holes in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And, um, consideration of report CP twenty-twenty-four dash, uh, three twenty-one, Counsel Palmer.
Moved by myself, seconded Counselor Schaefer. Resolve that the recommendations contained in report CP twenty-twenty-four dash three-two-one, titled, "Application for Official Plan Amendment OP twenty dash fourteen dash three, and Draft Plan of Subdivision SB twenty dash zero-five dash, dash, three. Stubby's Property Development, Inc., be adopted."
Counsel Palmer is the mover. Do you wish to speak to that?
Yeah. As a mayor of the Township of Norwich, we support this, uh, endeavor. Our township needs more housing. This, this plan will preserve the natural heritage features. The conservation areas will be transferred to LPRCA. We also support the, the two apartment lo- blocks, six stories. We, we live in an agricultural area, but we do need to reserve and conserve the areas for agriculture that we have. This is a good area. It's small, it's disconnected, uh, hard, hard for large machinery to reach. Uh, this is a wonderful application for this, this small property. Thank you.
Counselor Schaefer is the second.
Thank you, Warden, through you. Uh, with respect to the apartment buildings, Small Town Ontario has a real problem in maintaining its youth and its seniors, and I think these two, uh, these two buildings will go a long way to address that and hopefully keep, keep people in the, in the municipality that otherwise would have, uh, had to move out to find suitable accommodation.
Is there any other discussion? Counsel Petrie then, Counsel Gilding.
Thank you, Warden. Right, uh, writing through you to, to staff. Uh, traditionally, uh, medium-density blocks need to, uh, exit onto arterial or major roads. Uh, could you explain the planning justification around, uh, directing this traffic to what believes, appears to be a, a local road?
Sure. Through the warden. Um, yeah, it, that is the, that criteria that's in there that, um, indicates accessing to, uh, a major road or not exiting through a, a low-density residential area is really to address traffic concerns for the most part. In this case, uh, given that the traffic impact study indicated there should be no issues from a traffic volume and impact perspective, and the fact the overall subdivision in this case, um, because of the larger lot singles, the, the total unit yield for it really is, is not much different than at the high end of a low-density, uh, type development. So from an overall impact perspective, um, the position of staff was that it was reasonable in this case, um, to have it outlet through, uh, our residential, a low-density residential neighborhood.
Okay. If I could just follow that up with, uh, your concerns about, uh, construction traffic, which is, uh, I, I think that those are legitimate concerns. Obviously, that's a different type of use that's traditionally there. Uh, have staff had discussions with the applicants about providing adequate, or an alternate access point to the site as part of the, the process?
Through the warden. Um, I believe some initial discussions were had at the Township, uh, council meeting, uh, with the applicant, but, uh, that's a, a question I'd probably refer out to the applicant. I don't know the specific answer to that.
Counsel Gervaisi, then Counsel Mabry.
Thank you, through you, Warden. Uh, thank you. Counsel Petrie addressed two of my concerns. Um, with regards to the, um, dry creek bed, will that be completely removed and water diverted under different means?
Through the warden. Um, I don't know the, the specific details of the, the engineering for the stormwater management plan, but that, that creek area would be fully developed, so whatever stormwater management and drainage solution, um, is, uh, finalized for that area would need to address any water concerns from that, that area. But at the end of the day, all stormwater impacts from these lands would need to be addressed on the lands, or, or if not, improved.
Counsel Mabry.
Yes, uh, just two quick things. Uh, first, uh, under the conditions, number forty suggests that, uh, Bell Canada still needs an easement. I don't think, uh, I see in number thirty-six or thirty-seven, I think it was. Thirty-seven, uh, we've already provided easements for fiber optics. I don't think we need to, in the future, uh, be granting Bell Canada kind of a monopolistic sort of, or potentially monopolistic, uh, easement. So I would suggest that we consider getting rid of that, either in this application or in the other one, or in future ones, I mean. Uh, and then number thirty-eight, condition thirty-eight, uh, easements to Enbridge. Uh, a municipality that, uh, I think we all realize that we have to wander away from fossil fuels. I'm just wondering, at what point will we simply say, uh, heat pumps or other electrical systems is good enough? And, uh, I suspect that the, the answer is, uh, when, uh, directed to by council. So, any, any suggestions, Paul?
Yeah, certainly not something we'd wanna, uh, determine as part of the review of individual application, but, uh, I understand the point. Um, perhaps it's something that, uh, we, uh, refer for discussions as part of the Climate Change Action Plan, uh, implementation. Then I think that may require some, uh, provincial advocacy, because there's nothing in the Planning Act or PPS currently that would give us the authority to restrict a particular utility from providing service to the subdivisions.
So I realize we can't restrict it. I'm just saying, should we in fact grant something that ultimately we don't even want? Right? We're, we're granting an easement that if, uh, uh, the provider wanted to get the easement, they could do it on their own. They could ask for it.
Can I suggest that this would be a good conversation to have, not in relation to this specific application? Sorry, uh, any, Counsel Petrie.
Thank you, Warden, through you. Uh, obviously, this will be a change to the neighborhood, as you will have, uh, a different development. But I think, uh, I certainly agree with the statements that have been made, that this is the type of, uh, development we need to see in Small Town Ontario. Uh, a different mix of uses, and certainly, uh, uh, to keep our, our, our towns growing. You just can't go on the same way of just single-family development. It doesn't meet the needs of the community, nor the, uh, the future residents, uh, nor the sustainability of farmland. So I think that, uh, this is a good use of the land. It provides a mixed density, and certainly, uh, um, provides, uh, protection of the environment, uh, an increased level of, uh, habitat for endangered species, and certainly protecting, uh, that, uh, natural heritage has been stated. So I can support this. There's always, there's always, uh, pluses and pros and cons to every new development, but I think they've been weighed, and I think that, uh, in the, this will create a net benefit in the future. So I, I think that all the other ones can be addressed adequately, so I will support.
Any other discussion? Not seeing any. All holes in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And, uh, no delegations, presentations, and consideration thereof. Consideration of correspondence, Counsel Petrie.
Thank you, Warden, through you. Moved by myself, seconded by Counsel Achione. Resolve that correspondence item seven point one on the open meeting agenda of October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four be received.
Any discussion? Counsel Petrie.
I'd just like to provide some context for the rest of the council of this. Uh, we had a delegation come. I don't know if Ben is here, he was thinking about coming. Um, and, uh, council had a good discussion. One, they requested more information on what services are available through the county, which is always good to have, uh, education com- point, uh, component to it. But, uh, I did push them, uh, to state where their position was on hosting services, and so this is where the rest of the resolution is, that council of the town of Ingersoll is, uh, um, open to having, uh, services being, uh, provided in, in the town of Ingersoll. And so that's the correspondence that you see here today, and, uh, I hope that, uh, that, that message is transferred through to staff and the rest of the council here, uh, when future considerations come, uh, to light. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Counsel Achione.
Thank you, through you, Warden. I, I just wanna say, definitely support this. I mean, I, I think we have to work together, all communities. Um, get attainable housing in all our communities, just like our last application, of course, with Norwich. Uh, trying to get, uh, attainable homes for, to keep our families, as Counselor Schaefer said, to keep our youth and even our retired in our own communities is fantastic. I can certainly support this any way I can.
Counsel Palmer.
Uh, this is a very generous, uh, movement on behalf of the, uh, town of Ingersoll to aid, uh, the rest of the county of Oxford. Uh, I very supportive of this.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I think, I think it's a very, um, as we all know, challenging, uh, topic, and I think it's a really, uh, mature response from, uh, if I, if it's fair for me to say, from, from Ingersoll council to say they're willing to meet the, the challenge sort of head-on, and, and have a conversation about what does a solution actually look like. Um, and again, as, as Counsel Palmer said, you know, it, a, a solution like this might be provided in Ingersoll, but its reach will be broader than Ingersoll and, and, and reach people all over Oxford County. Um, so, yeah, uh, I think, uh, thanks and congratulations to Ingersoll for that, and I'm, I'm sure that, uh, Oxford County housing staff will be looking at that as a, as an opportunity to, you know, what, what conversations can we have, but what can be done? Any other discussion? Holes in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And, uh, reports from Department of Community Planning done. Uh, eight point two point one, CAO, twenty-twenty-four oh seven, five-year tourism plan, twenty-twenty-five to twenty-three D presentation. And, uh, head of tourism, um, Meredith Maywood, do you wanna, yeah. I'll turn it over to you.
Warden, members of council, in twenty-twenty-four, the Oxford County Business Plan tax, tasked Tourism Oxford with the development of a five-year tourism plan. Uh, this plan was developed with the support of Oxford County Council and funding from the Federal Economic Development Agency of Southern Ontario. Eileen Murray of Miller Murray Consulting was tasked with developing this plan and is here to present the results today for your consideration. I'm excited to now pass it over to Eileen, and then we'll take questions, if you have any, when she's completed. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you for having me here today. Um, I wanted to start just, uh, by reviewing what the objectives of the, the, the project were. Um, it was really to guide tourism management, product development, and marketing for a five-year period, and build on the existing strengths with the, the existing program, but the community strengths and the trends that we're seeing in tourism and the opportunities that lie ahead. Uh, we also wanted to make sure that aligned with the various strategies at the, the county level, um, at the regional level, this Ontario Southwest Strategic Plan, and what's happening at the Ontario level with Destination Ontario. So the project itself was three phases. The first phase, environmental scan, situation analysis, where we looked at that current situation, and again, those trends, those areas of opportunity. In phase two, we engaged with the community with, um, focus groups and interviews and three online surveys to get a real sense of what the aspirations of the community were, and what the experiences of tourism operators and visitors, and, uh, the, the residents, what their aspirations were. And then finally, in phase three, we developed the strategy with all of that background information. So why is tourism so important to talk about and to have this longer-term plan? First of all, um, in the world of economic development, we actually refer to tourism as an export business, because it brings new money into the community, and it, it relies on people outside of the resident base, of the, the, the existing business base, to support, um, the activity, the, the, um, the businesses and the tax base within Oxford County. It helps to diversify the economy, so you're not reliant on one industry in particular. It creates jobs and business opportunities. It supports the community services by bringing additional, uh, people that, uh, can support those, the, the programs and, uh, and facilities that are here. Uh, it encourages people to feel, feel, um, proud of their community and where they live, uh, and gives them opportunities to show that off to, uh, their friends and relatives and others. It supports our community beautification and the conservation, preservation of the histori- history, the culture, and the recreational facilities within the community, and it contributes overall to the quality of life of the residents that live in the county. So in Oxford County, there are a hundred and ninety tourism businesses that work actively with tourism middlesex. Thirty-four hundred people are employed within the industry as of twenty-twenty-one. Um, in twenty-twenty-one, there are six hundred and seventy thousand Canadian U, US visitor trips to Oxford County, uh, and that resulted in one point four million nights of accommodation stays with, accommodation and residence stays, uh, within the county. Um, at this moment, um, because, uh, Oxford County is surrounded by a number of larger, uh, more dense population centers, we're seeing about seventy-six percent of the visitors to Oxford County are same-day visitors, and about twenty-four percent are overnight visitors. Um, we'd love to see those numbers shift a little bit, because we know that a same-day visitor spends about ninety dollars on their visit, whereas in, the average spend for someone who spends overnight is two hundred and forty-four dollars, so a real economic benefit from those overnight stays. When we did the environmental scan, we saw a few themes that we, uh, uh, dived, dove into a little further. Um, we saw that Oxford County has a really unique Um, we saw that Oxford County has a really unique offering for, uh, those larger urban centers. They really appreciate the small-town rural experience that, that they can have here in the county. Um, visiting friends and relatives is a very common reason for people to travel all over Ontario and likewise in Oxford County. About 50% of the people that visit Oxford County incorporate a visit with friends and family when they are here. Sustainability is an important consideration at this council table, of course, but also with residents and visitors. They are looking for communities that have embraced their responsibility to provide a sustainable offering. Longer stays, of course, as I said earlier, is, uh, something of interest not only to, um, those of, uh, those of us in the tourism industry, but the tourism businesses and residents see a value to that, too. We have seen a real trend in technology, um, providing inspiration for travel, whether it be through social media or websites, et cetera, uh, but also enabling people to plan their travel plans, and so incorporating, uh, technology and using those tools is a really important consideration for tourism middlesex, uh, um, excuse me, for Tourism Oxford as they move forward. Um, a welcoming visitor experience is also really critical. Uh, when you look at those, uh, those markets surrounding Oxford County, uh, you are dealing with a diverse market, and those individuals all kneel to, need to feel that they will have a welcoming experience, that they will have food choices and other cultural, um, expectations that are supported. And finally, workforce development is a really important consideration in all areas of business and likewise in the tourism sector, and so that is something that we need to consider. So, during the consultation, we had 472 touchpoints with the community incorporating a tourism planning committee, which helped to guide the development of this plan. Um, there were two focus groups, and we had 13 individual interviews with a selection of some council members, individual businesses in the tourism sector, and other, uh, municipal representatives, and others who had some, uh, role as stakeholders in the tourism sector. And as I said, we had three, uh, surveys, one for visitors, one for residents, and one for tourism operators. From the consultation, we learned a few things. Um, there was a desire to enhance the existing attractions and infrastructure and expand and build upon that, excuse me. Um, collaboration was seen as a really important consideration, working together, tourism operators working together, but also municipalities working collectively and, and working in, in step with, uh, with the county operate activities. Marketing and promotion, there's always a desire to see more and, and, uh, greater reach and, uh, more frequency. Sustainability, as I mentioned earlier, was also something that we heard about during the consultation. Tourism readiness is, uh, kind of a, a blanket phrase that I think bears a little bit more understanding, but it's making sure that the operators and the, the community as a whole is, uh, is welcoming for tourists in that it provides, uh, the support that they need to find their way around the community, to, um, to access the types of things that they'd like to do, and, um, to appreciate that maybe that everybody doesn't know about turning left at the Red Barn where Fred lived, you know, those types of things, um, making sure that, that it's really easy for someone who's not from the here to, to find their way and to find things that are, uh, welcoming to do. And then again, as I spoke about earlier, making sure that the community is welcoming. So, those are the things that came through, through the consultation. When it comes to developing the plan, there is a series of elements that, uh, came together, um, in the development of the plan. All of those things identified in the environmental scan were brought together, and we established a vision and a mission, which I'll walk you through in a moment. Goals and objectives, there were five goals and objectives that were outlined, and a series of actions. And I think I've got forty, there are 45, but it's actually 32. Right.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three. I apologize for that. Yeah, that, I thought we cleared, cleared that up. Um, anyway, the vision then for, um, for Tourism Oxford was, is to establish a vibrant, vibrant tourism destination that contributes to the county's economic, social, and environmental well-being, recognizing that all three components need to be addressed to be successful. And the mission then is to build resiliency in the sector and collaboration with, uh, those important stakeholders, residents, business, and local government, and we do that through destination management, through product development, and through marketing. There are five goals and objectives, as I mentioned earlier. The first, economic and social and environmental benefit. Um, our, uh, long-term objective in this area is to make sure that it contributes to the economy, to environmental sustainability, and to the overall well-being of the community and its residents. The resilient, thriving tourism industry means that businesses have what they need to be successful, whether it be data, whether it be some tools, whether it be coaching, other resources, that they have everything they need to be successful. A compelling product offering, again, Oxford County offers a unique, distinct offering that many, um, other, more urban centers cannot offer. Um, and those experiences build on the unique character here in the county, and they really do welcome and delight, uh, visitors. Uh, the year-round component is, uh, really important. Um, very often tourism is, uh, is seen as a seasonal, uh, activity, and it certainly spikes, uh, in the summer, but, uh, we know particularly in Oxford County that those shoulder seasons, there's an awful lot that's offered here, um, particularly in the culinary and the harvest and spring, um, you know, that, that really does expand that season and allows for more, um, economic impact. And, uh, effective marketing and promotion, as I mentioned, is something that's really of interest to the operators, um, and making sure that they were reading, meeting the right people at the right time. Um, we want to make sure by using some of those technology tools that I referenced earlier, that, um, that the efforts in that marketing area are effective, that they're efficient, and that they are, um, supporting both the residents as, I'm sorry, the visitors as, as customers, but also the tourism businesses who are, for Tourism Oxford, a customer that needs support so that they can effectively do their job and, and, uh, welcome visitors. And then collaborative tourism network, at that, that really speaks to engaging the tourism partners across the county and working collaboratively so that they can, um, all benefit. Um, I'm not going to walk through every individual, uh, action. I know I don't have the time for that, but I did want to bring, uh, just highlight a few pieces very quickly. Uh, we want to make sure that there are efficient systems to measure, monitor, and report on tourism so that you understand how, um, how the plan is being implemented and how, uh, what areas there may be required for future tweaking or refinement. Um, we want to look at environmental sustainability and overall well-being, um, in Oxford County and celebrate those sustainability achievements, and, uh, alternative transportation will be something we consider certainly in that area. And the thriving tourism industry area, uh, and industry communications plan so that everyone who's involved in that sector, um, knows where things are going, how they can engage, and can be informed when they're making important decisions. Um, training and updates for the tourism sector is going to be really important. Um, and, um, I'm not sure if everyone is aware of, of how leading-edge Oxford County has been in the area of experiential tourism and how, uh, much the visiting public has embraced the, um, the experiential tourism offerings that are here, uh, but that is something that you'll want to definitely continue, uh, and also make sure that, um, the operators are ready for visitors and are informed on how they can best support. Um, other things in that, um, is continuing to support your signage plan. As much as we rely on our phones, sometimes you don't have the coverage that you need, but also they're important for reassuring people that they are on the right track and informing the residents and others about the other opportunities in the area. Uh, under the compelling product offering, um, the whole, uh, the welcoming component, um, providing some, um, some certifications behind that provides people with the opportunity to make sure that they really are aware of what they do, need to do to be welcoming. Uh, and there are a number of certifications in this area, including, um, Rainbow Registered and other DEI programs, but also, um, there are certifications in sustainability and accessibility that should be considered. Cycling is a huge area of opportunity, uh, and hiking in this area, um, and so those, uh, those master plans and supporting those and making sure that the visitor is considered will be an important consideration. I'm watching my time roll away very quickly. Um, the tourism pillars, um, will continue in, in this plan to be touring, culinary, uh, and, uh, then secondary pillars of the green tourism and then outdoors, which includes waterways and trails. Um, I'm going to call it there and just say that, um, the next steps then are an implementation plan that we've been working with Tourism Oxford on, um, identifying the priority levels and the timing, uh, and some budget ideas, and establishing performance measures, so that Tourism Oxford can report back to you, um, on, on their effectiveness, um, in, uh, in achieving their goals and integrate that into their annual work plan. There was a planning committee that was involved in the development of this plan, and we're very thankful for their support. And with that, I'm very happy to take any questions you may have.
Questions from, uh, council? Counsel?
Thank you. Through you, Warden, to, uh, Ms. Murray. Uh, first off, thank you for the presentation. It was excellent. I'm, I'm curious, a couple weeks ago, I experienced, uh, a Guess Where trip, um, and I thought Norfolk County put it all on. So, while we were there, yes, I've learned since, we were doing some kind of research. Um, do we, or do you recommend through your experience and everything else, and maybe this is directed to Meredith, but do we do that, like with our Cheese Trail, and I felt there's probably another dozen couples on the same trip we would bump into every other stop on a regular basis? Um, well, first off, none of them unfortunately heard of really Oxford County, and none of them, even though they're from Hamilton, you know, somewhere, uh, one was actually from Sarnia, but they weren't familiar with it, so I got to think, are we, I don't know if it's something we have to buy into, do we have to promote ourselves to companies like this? But I got to say, we were, we were gone at 9:30 in the morning, we ended up with dinner at Port Dover at the end of the day, and we probably saw nine or 10 spots I've never seen before in my life, and I thought I knew the area well. Um, so I, I encourage us to look at getting into that. It's certainly a very active, and the couples were having a, a riot.
So, yes, I am familiar with that group, and, uh, they actually do come into the area, and when we've been out at events like Big Cheese Days, we're seeing them come through. Uh, every year, we send pitches to them, actually of activities they could be doing in the area, but with Aileen's study, um, one of the things that came through from many people that were surveyed was the desire for more itineraries, and so that is definitely part of the plan, and it'll be a higher priority in the implementation. So, yes, we want to make it easy, and the Your Next Stop program is part of that, where we tell people six to nine places that are in close proximity, provide a map at each location, uh, and, uh, online marketing for that as well. And that program, we've been testing it this year as part of the Fed Dev, uh, project, and it was outperforming our other ads, uh, well above, uh, market average for impressions and click-through rate.
Anyone else? Uh, question for me. Um, so first of all, really happy to see the signs figure prominently. Somebody had a great idea with those signs at some point. Really happy to see that in there. Um, a question around the measurements, really happy to see that there's something in there about, you know, develop efficient systems to measure, monitor, and report. Not expecting a, a straightforward answer on this one, but has there been any consideration given to one of those measures? Municipalities are funded by property tax, so general economic development, good, right? There are neighbors, there are businesses, we, we benefit from those services, but as a municipal government, we actually only benefit when somebody pays more property taxes, right? That reduces the property tax pressure on their neighbors. Um, has there been any consideration to one of the possible measures being a measure of, you know, assessment growth due to tourism business, um, you know, adding on, buying new properties, renovating, et cetera?
Um, at the moment, um, what we have as far as, uh, numbers to base on are the number of visitors and, um, estimates of their economic impact, how much they spend when they're here, and, uh, there is a model through the, the province called the TRIM model, which I can't remember what that acronym boils up to, but, um, but basically, it does do a calculation on what the taxes would be as a result of that. So, yes, um, that's a long way of saying yes, but, um, uh, as with a number of the, the products that we get from the province, unfortunately, there is a lag in the timing on those things, but yes, um, you can, you can provide tax information based on visitors.
Thank you. Anyone else? Uh, Counsel Petrie?
Thank you, Warden, through you, seconded by Counsel Mayberry. That resolve that the Recommendation Containment Report, CAO 2024 to 20, uh, 2024-07, titled Five-Year Tourism Plan, 2025 to 2030, be adopted.
Is there any discussion? Counsel Petrie?
Uh, certainly, Oxford County is a beautiful place that has lots to offer, and I think that, uh, this goes to, uh, sh, uh, have that strategic lens on it to try to, how do, how do we promote that most of all? Um, you know, people come from all over the world, from different aspects. Um, I know from our, our own town, uh, museum that, uh, the guestbook is signed by people from all over the world. Sadly, it's not signed by people locally, and so I think that's one market that, uh, we really need to tap into is just people just exploring their own county. Um, we have a, I know, we probably have a, a better, uh, tourism ourselves being on county council because we get to travel, uh, throughout the county more than I ever have, and it is an extraordinary place, and so it does have a lot to offer. So, I look forward to, uh, seeing the outcomes of this, and certainly supportive of the more people that come here, the more people that will see the great place that we get to live in.
And may I address that? Thank you, Mr. Ward.
Technically, no.
Oh.
Sorry.
Okay.
We're, we're done with your part. Sorry. I'm sure, I'm sure Counsel Petrie would love to have a conversation with you afterwards. Uh, Counsel Palmer?
Yes, uh, Tourism Township of Norwich, we have two stops, I believe, on the Cheese Trail, Guns Hill Cheese, and, uh, the Norwich Museum for the butter-making. Every Saturday, when I go to our local deli, I ask people that I don't know, where are you from? Cambridge, or Branford, or Tilsonburg, or, uh, people from Sarnia even, so it's, there are people out there, we just have to keep them coming. Thank you.
Counsel Achione?
Yeah, thank you, through you, Warden. Just, again, a general comment, it, it's something that, uh, we really love doing is going exploring and, and really the benefits of bringing people into Oxford County to explore all our municipalities is huge. Certainly support this. Again, when I, I read the, uh, council agenda, I got a little excited just because of my recent experience, uh, with that trip, but certainly will keep on pushing and encouraging people to live, work, and play here in Oxford County as much as possible, but we welcome others to come and explore our beauty.
Anyone else? Thank you. I think if you're getting Counsel Achione excited to read the agenda, I think, you know, job, job, job well done.
Thank you.
Um, any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And, uh, 8.3 human, 8, 8.3 human resources, 8.3.1 HR, 2024-03, Internal Diversity Equity and Inclusion DEI Action Plan, 2024 to 2025 update. Um, Director Smith, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Warden Ryan, through you to council. Just, uh, a few brief comments in addition to the report. Uh, as council is well aware, developing and implementing a DEI, an internal DEI action plan is a key initiative under our current strategic plan. Uh, you first saw our internal DEI action plan last November, so we felt it was timely to bring an update to you to show you the progress that's been made, uh, in the last year in terms of the actions outlined in this report. Um, obviously, this is an internal DEI plan, so HR, um, plays an important role in it. However, Ayesha Sajid, who is our HR officer, and Sarah Hamaleki, who is our manager of strategic initiatives, are both here today as well, as collectively we all, um, have a lot of work to do in implementing this plan. Um, you can read through the progress that's we've been, that we have made, but I think one of the things I wanted to highlight is that, you know, this plan isn't just about checking off a number of boxes. Um, the goal is that collectively, by making progress in each of these key action areas, we build a culture of diversity, equity, and inclusion, and really build and embed these practices in everything that we do on a daily basis. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions from council on the report? Counsel Goveeze?
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure I'll be asking the least popular questions through you, Warden. So there's a statement on page 109 that says, "Key priorities for all progressive organizations." DEI has become a key priority for all progressive organizations. I'm curious as to know where that statement came from. Like, is it a personal thought, or is it factual? Is it a statistic?
Through you, Warden, to Counselor Gilvasey. I guess as the author of the report, I will say that is my, my comment. I guess through observations in, you know, our field of work and, you know, speaking with other municipalities, and really, you know, just through things that we, you know, we see in the media and so on, I guess I can confidently say that most progressive organizations are looking at ways to implement and embed DEI into all of their practices.
Okay, thank you. I, I guess, through you, Warden, like a comment that I would have to that is, I think we have to be cautious about what statements we're making, that they're factual, or they're coming from statistical information, because this is on a public record. My next question would be with regards to hiring practices, and it was about advertising more, I guess, trying to entice more diversity, equity, and inclusion. And I'll be the first person to say, I honestly don't care what someone's background is with regards to who we hire. However, I need some clarification on what this actually means, because the, like especially when I think about water, we're sitting here and we are liable for a water system to provide clean drinking water. So I need to be like 100% assured that we are actually like hiring the most qualified people to take care of that water to provide safety. And I think about that when I think about EMS as well, right? Do we have the absolute best people, you know, in that ambulance to serve our customers? Do we have the best people in our water system to make sure that we deliver safe drinking water? So I need clarification around how the policy would be changing with regards to hiring in the future.
Absolutely. Through you, Warden, to Counselor Gilvasey. Absolutely. Our goal is always to hire the most qualified candidate for any vacancy that we have. I think it more speaks to the unconscious biases that sometimes can exist when we're hiring. So it's just ensuring that our staff who participate in the recruitment process have been educated on things like unconscious bias, so that they're aware of them. But at the end of the day, it is hiring the most qualified candidate. I can definitely assure you of that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Question for me, is the intention here then, by way of follow-up, that, that through the, through this policy, that we would attract a larger number and a broader range of people applying for a job that then staff would have to go through in order to find that best candidate?
Through you, Warden, or to you, Warden. I think the goal is that our entire community is aware of the job postings that we have, and that we're attracting the most qualified candidates that do reflect the diversity of our community. Does that answer your question?
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Schaefer.
Thank you, Warden, through you. Question regarding Strategic Action 1.1, the workforce survey. Can you give me an idea what kind of questions would be asked of our employees?
Through you, Warden, to Counselor Schaefer. Yes, it's a number of diversity-related questions, so things like race, religion, those types of age, diversity-related, education.
Do we care what somebody's religion is?
Well, we're trying to understand the, our current diversity level so that we can measure in the future whether our workforce has or has not become more diverse, and again, whether our workforce reflects the diversity within our community. Our community, I think we would all agree, has become more diverse over the past few years, so we want to, you know, see how our workforce has or hasn't also become more diverse.
Another follow-up. Is, will be a mandatory questionnaire?
No. It'll be optional and anonymous.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Mayberry.
I was gonna, I was gonna be quiet on this, I honestly was. But I just wondering, the comment about our workforce has become more diverse, and yet I look around the room, and I would have to say, white Anglo-Saxon, anyways, I don't see the evidence. I would also point out, since the Warden asked me to speak on this, that we might want to remember that not all of the most qualified people are white Anglo-Saxons. Thank you.
Any other questions on the report? Counselor Petrie.
No, it's a statement I'll save till we have a motion.
Any other questions? Counselor Martin.
Moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Petrie, resolved that the recommendation contained in report HR 2024-03, titled Internal Diversity Equity and Inclusion DEI Action Plan 2024-2025 Update be adopted.
Counselor Martin is the mover. He should speak to that.
I'll just say that, thank you, Warden Ryan, that I fully support this project. I think that we need to constantly be taking steps forward rather than in neutral when it comes to equity, diversity, and inclusion, and this report outlines the steps that, as a county, that we're going to be taking to, to accomplish that.
Counselor Petrie is the second.
Yes, Warden, through you. Sometimes we forget DEI actions and then what they, they truly mean. Yesterday, we had our county joint accessibility committee meeting here where we heard a lot about, you know, just accessibility within a workplace or housing, and so that's one of the things that always comes to mind as well. And so we have to, you know, with people with disabilities, when trying to attract the best qualified workforce we can, we have to make sure that we're in an inclusive workplace where everybody feels comfortable even applying for it. We also heard from our tourism report that, and different things around it, that people don't know about Oxford County, and so that comes from a workforce as well. And so we're trying, if we're trying to attract people from outside to work here and know about Oxford County, the great thing it has to offer through employment, these are initiatives that would help that, and certainly we want to provide the greatest workplace possible. We're in an extremely competitive environment going forward, and so anything we can do to try to help our staff attract the best people that we can, that's great, and certainly we want to, again, make them feel at home here and enjoy their time while they're, they're working here. So certainly supportive of all the initiatives towards that.
Any other discussion? I've been a fan of Formula One for a long time, since I was about seven years old, and Gilles Villeneuve drove a Ferrari, and, and I've followed it all that time, and as I've got older, I've learned a lot from it, I think, that I think is relevant to a lot of other things in my life that I didn't really realize at the time. And one of them is that, a saying in Formula One recruiting drivers, that the, that probably the greatest Formula One driver ever is herding goats in Mongolia. The idea being that he's probably never heard of car racing at all, never mind Formula One. Formula One's certainly never heard of him, and it's mainly because nobody's ever talked to him about it. He's never had the opportunity, doesn't have the chance to get in a go-kart, develop skills, make connections, or anything like that. And I think the strength of this kind of policy is to reach those people and say, maybe, maybe you want to actually go and work here. Maybe you are the best water system operator that we're ever going to get. Maybe you're the next director of public works, but we've never talked to you, we've never reached out to you because of who you are and where you're at. And, and certainly to Counselor Gilvasey's comment, I mean, I think we all take that concern very seriously. Each one of us individually couldn't end up in jail if we don't deliver water properly. So I certainly want to extend that reach as far as we possibly can and make sure that if, you know, if the next best water system operator we have is herding goats in Mongolia, I want, I want them to know about that job, because I want that person working here so that I don't end up in jail and a resident doesn't end up sick because of the water we're providing. So I think this is the, this is the right way to go about doing that and make sure we're reaching everybody, you know, current and future employees and finding, making sure that they have the opportunity to do the best work they can for, for this council, but for, for Oxford County residents. So very, very supportive of this going forward. Any other comments? All who's in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And 8.4.1 Corporate Services, CS 2024-36, Business Plan and Budget Review, Third Quarter. Director Buechner, do you want to highlight anything for council there?
Yes, thank you, Warden. So this Q3 report provides an update for council on the business plan provisions and goals and objectives within the 2024 business plan and budget, and also an indication of where, what we're forecasting for year-end from a financial perspective. So we're indicating that we'll be looking at an overall operating deficit of 8.4 million, and that is comprised of 0.6 million in the general levy, just under a million in the library levy budget, and then water and wastewater systems make up 9.2 million of a deficit. So that's what's bringing us down. We'll get into a little more of the details here shortly. As you can see, they're summarized to a certain degree in table, in the first table in the report on page three, so you can see how it's broken, how the, any surplus would be allocated to the reserves as an example, or supplemented by reserves in the event that there is a deficit. So what is notable in this report is the impact of development charge exemptions. So we've gone into a little bit of detail on, on page four, and there's, there's a table on page five, which is basically, we're looking at total estimated exemptions for 2024 of approximately 13.7 million. So of that 13.7 million, approximately 85% or 11.6 million is estimated as non-statutory exemptions, and the remaining 2.1 million represents the statutory exemptions that are imposed through the Development Charges Act. So what does this mean for future budgets and for 2025? As an example, as we're starting to plan for that now, so you know that we had passed, or that council had adopted, a new development charge background study and bylaw in 2024. So in our 2024 budget, just based on historical experience, we had a provision of just under $1 million for exemptions. And so as the Development Charge Background Study established what our exemptions would be based on non-statutory, and the newly imposed statutory exemptions under the Development Charges Act, there was an estimate made. So what we've done for future planning is we've looked at that amount, that total amount, and because the planning period in the background study covers a 10-year period, we've divided that. So we take 1/10 of that amount, and that's what we would expect to experience on an annual basis. So that's what we would have planned to put in our annual budgets. Just however, looking at the significant overage in 2024 that we've experienced, and, and we can say that in large part, the responsibility of that overage is an industrial park that's being developed here in the city of Woodstock. So that's put out most of the pressure on this exemption balance that we were, that was unanticipated. So what we've decided to do, instead of putting in future budgets, the $7 million that we thought we would have to for the 10-year period of the background study, we are upfronting some of that money, so we're trying to bring some of that forward in, in 2024, just because so much of it has been utilized in, in that timeframe. And in the future period, so we'll ratchet that down slightly for a couple of years, down to 5.4 million for 2025, and then we'll bring it up a little bit in 2026 for the remaining 10 years to 6.4. So what does that mean for 2025? That increase to 5.4 million will represent a 5.8% increase on the 2025 draft budget. And of that four, our 5.4 million, approximately 65% would be related to non-statutory exemptions. So that's the typical ratio that we would have seen in the past between non-statutory and statutory exemptions, it's 35 and 65, 65 being the non-statutory. So of that, it would be about $3 million that would be the non-statutory portion that we are going to have to find other revenues to fund. Nevertheless, we still don't have, you know, we're, we're still very, in infant stages of this new development charge background study, so we're still collecting, you know, fees from those that are eligible for DCs, so it's going to take us some time to build that up. So you can see on table one there on page four of the report, what the budget was. As I mentioned, it's just under $1 million. Our actual forecast is 13.7 million, so that's the resulting shortfall, is 12.8 million. And it's largely in our water and wastewater services, because those are the ones that are in the greatest demand predominantly in industrial development. So with all that said, we do have updates provided, there's details on Attachment 1 with the surplus or deficit allocated by division, and then we've got a capital plan update for you as well, that's attached, is Attachment 2, or Attachment 3, rather, and it's showing a variance of approximately $24.2 million or 19.9% of the budget still remaining. And that is, is the result of about three projects, so two of them of which contracts were approved at, I believe, our last council meeting for the Bar Hill Booster Pumping Station and a Lansdowne Pumping Station, and then there's also the Drumbo Wastewater Treatment Plan upgrades that are in that as well. So that makes up predominantly that gap that, you know, obviously, we're not going to be able to get those projects completed by the end of the year, but now we're getting started on the contracts, so that's good news. And if there's any other questions or any questions that council would have, I'm certainly prepared to entertain those now.
Thank you. Questions from council on the report? Question for me, I think, just want to first make sure I get some of these numbers right. So I think the note in the report and in your comments, you said that the non-statutory, the projected non-statutory exemptions in 2025, the allocation that we're thinking of making is about 5.4 million. Is that accurate?
That would be statutory and non-statutory.
Sorry, statutory and non-statutory.
That's correct.
And so combined, that would be approximately 5.8% budget increase?
Correct.
And based on 2024, we think, you know, of that 5.4 million, you know, roughly 80% of it, in 2024, roughly 80% of it was, was non-statutory?
85.
85.
In this year.
Okay. So then my question then, given that those are accurate numbers, is, you know, could council remove the non-statutory exemptions before or during the 2025 budget process? I know a couple of councillors have had questions at, at other times during the year. I think it was at the, I think it was at the second quarter, quarterly review. Is there, is there, if, if council wanted to do that, is there a mechanism for council to do that either before or as part of 2025 budget deliberations?
Yeah, through, through you, Warden, there is a, there is a mechanism. The Development Charges Act very clearly sets out what's required. Now, within one year of passing a bylaw, council is made, is allowed to make amendments to the bylaw. I just need to confirm with our consultant that a change such as this would be significant enough, whether it would trigger a public meeting, which I expect it would, so that would have to be entertained. So just from a timing perspective, I'm not sure we could get it in place by January 1 as an example, but we can certainly look at that process and report back to council accordingly through the budget process.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Gilvasey.
Thank you. Thank you, Warden, for actually asking that question, because it's kind of on the top of my mind as well. I have a question regarding council. Council, it says the actuals are 996,000, and it would be page 128 of 214 of the agenda, and it says actuals are 996, but the forecast is 664. Page 128.
Yeah.
I guess the numbers don't make sense.
Whereabouts on 128?
Yep, I found it.
Right at the top.
Yeah.
I believe it's through, through the Warden to, to Counselor Gilvasey, I believe that's related to exemptions. We did put some exemptions in that.
Warden, if I could just interrupt, oh, sorry. The microphone.
Thank you. Sorry. It was on, and I turned it on, but it was off then, so my apologies. I believe that we built some exemptions into the council budget or in the I believe that we built some exemptions into the council budget or in the forecast as they were coming in, so I'll certainly look into that. But it is suggesting that the forecast is well within, so I think we reallocated that, that, again, that was, I believe it was a misentry into the council budget, so we're forecasting at the year-end very close to what the budget was.
Thank you. Through you, Warden. Like, yeah, because like right now, it appears that council's way over budget, just looking at the actual number versus the forecast, so. And, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? Councillor Gilvase?
Moved by myself and seconded by councillor Tate, resolved that the recommendation contained in report CS 2024-36 titled Business Plan and Budget Review, third quarter be adopted.
Councillor Gilvase is the mover. Do you wish to speak to that?
No, thank you. Good.
Any other discussion? Councillor Petrie?
Thank you, Warden, through you. I appreciate the information in here quite a bit, because to me, it shows that our policies are working. You know, we don't charge development fees. We have exemptions, but we're spurring, the more exemptions we have, the more development we're having. That's to be expected. That's what we wanted. That was the intent of that whole program, was to make sure that we have those. Now, we're also seeing that those developments are going to be paying a large sum of weighted taxes to offset, to be able to increase the taxpayer to pay those exemptions. I think that we have a policy in place. You know, I would argue that, yeah, we see those exemptions happening, but if we were to increase, decrease those exemptions, well, then it's a double-edged sword, because if those developments don't happen because of those exemptions going away, then we don't have the taxes coming in either. So we don't have that development. We've had a lot of growth, industrial growth within our county, which is good, and so that should be expected, to see higher exemption rates come through. I think our biggest thing that we need to do is plan for those. And of course, our projections were off this year, so we have a deficit. So I think that that's work that we have to do during our budget cycle, to be able to make sure that we're accounting for that and using data as we see it. We're going to see more growth within our county. That's the type of growth we need to see. That will spur the residential growth that we need as well, that does pay DCs. But if we don't have that type of growth happening, then our, we certainly won't see the increased weighted assessment that comes along with those investments. And so I think that, yeah, we need to do some work to make sure that we're adequately addressing the accounting side of things, but I see that as a sign that things are working, and that will, we're having increased investment within our community in the areas that we want to see happen. That's why we have those exemptions, whether statutory or not. We want to see those investments made. Otherwise, we wouldn't have those exemptions in place.
Councillor Mayberry and councillor Gilvase?
Well, I understand where councillor Petrie's coming from. I'm not sure that I think there's a direct correlation between DCs and development. Sometimes people just want to set up in Oxford County, because it's a great place to be.
Councillor Gilvase?
Through you, Warden. I'd actually would concur with councillor Mayberry, and respectfully, I'll have to disagree with councillor Petrie, because I know when we were doing the DC charge study, I had mentioned that this is another form of corporate welfare. So now we're asking our citizens to pick up, to pick up the debt, to help fund industry coming here. And I think there's industrial growth everywhere, and not everybody provides DC exemptions. And in fact, like, I think it was, I was talking to a long-term care home, and they were telling me the DC charges that they pay in other communities is quite phenomenal. And while they really like Oxford, obviously, because it's zero, but there has to be maybe that fine balance in there somewhere between, that we're not putting an undue hardship on our citizens. And we have other programs, like, you know, CIP programs. So when you talk about realized taxes, some of those taxes aren't realized for 10 years, right? So we've got that cost to bear as well. So, I mean, I think, quite frankly, it's worth exploring what you had questioned about earlier, because I don't think we're trying to, we're making life more unaffordable for residents by giving big exemptions to corporate. Sorry. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Councillor Acioli?
Yeah, thank you, through you, Warden. I'm actually going to disagree there and agree with councillor Petrie. I think this is a constant discussions with companies looking for new homes and attracting them to come to our area. I think that looking at tax bases and the increased water sewer rates we get as a county is, far exceeds any of the DC charges that they're going to see when we're looking at some of these increases. Yes, there is a cost. It's always upfront, but over the long term, those are recovered, and I still believe that by offering low or no DC charges in certain segments attracts some of the bigger players with big, big areas they're looking for, big, big companies.
Councillor Mayberry?
I guess I, I'm not actually disagreeing. I think it does attract, no DCs do attract. I'm just wondering, though, what's ROI on it, and would we have attracted the very same companies because of the great job of our current development officers anyways? And without, or with DCs? So not knowing that, it's kind of like we're on two sides of a court, not knowing what game the other person's playing. And I think maybe it would be helpful if there's a simple way of figuring out if we had charged DCs, how many of those companies would have been here, or if, you know, how many did, came here specifically because of that, and what is the economic return on it? I'm sure that the staff and corporate services has that number off the top of their head.
Councillor Petrie?
I can give you a very recent example of a conversation I had. I was at the EV Day at General Motors, and I was talking to the president of GM Canada. And the reasons why they're investing in Oxford County at the Camby plant is because we are so competitive. They have the ability to put those services anywhere at any number of plants within North America. A, the workforce is second to none, but B, our competitive advantage within the county of Oxford is there, and certainly, they just had an addition of a 400,000-square-foot battery assembly plant. That, and that, that was, that was directly, there was huge correlation between that and no DCs. I can tell you, talk to your local economic development officers, they will tell you over and over again, when they get see investment opportunities from the province, the first thing is on their mind is, if there's DCs, it's not coming. I don't think we want to be off that list. It's a good list.
Anyone else? I would suggest there's another thing that we need to think about. I think councillor Gilvase raises a good point about CIP as well, because certainly part of the idea, well, almost the entirety of the idea of DC exemptions, is that you will recoup more money in property taxes than you give up in the DC exemptions. But CIPs mean, depending on how they're structured, you are not collecting that for a number of years. And, you know, council can have a healthy debate over, you know, the validity and the ROI on, you know, DC exemptions and CIPs, and how long a payback there is, and what that payback actually is. But I suggest there's another thing that we consider, and that is, you know, while it's good to have industrial property taxpayers, I would suggest that it's only good, and as much as our residents experience a positive experience from that. And when I go out on the streets of any one of our communities, I have a really hard time justifying to those people that, you know, I know you're picking up needles in your backyard, and I know you have somebody, you know, you have to clear out of the bank vestibule every morning, and I know that when I talk to every one of our community partners dealing in safety and well-being in the county, they're struggling, I find it really hard to say to them, but don't worry, we're going to attract another large industry to town who's going to attract more people, to put more upward pressure on house prices, more pressure on all the services that we get. I'm not saying that growth is bad by any means, right? I mean, I'm a child of immigrants to Canada. I am that growth, right? I'm not from Oxford. I came here. But I think we need to have a serious discussion about, like, how much growth can we actually accommodate as a community? Because I think our residents would say right now, not this. The 1% we've experienced historically versus the 2% we're experiencing now, I know to a layperson, they might say, it's only 1% more. What's the big deal? I think we know what that big deal is if we walk around our community and what our residents are experiencing. So I think we need to have a serious discussion about, you know, exactly what kind of growth are we attracting and encouraging, and exactly how much of it are we encouraging, and is it something that overall, not just Oxford County council, but all of our area municipal partners, our hospital agencies, all those partners that we have, and how much are they straining under this? Because I think our residents would say that they are not enjoying the growth that we're having right now. But I think if we went back in time, six or seven years, they would say, you know, 1% growth, that was good. So I think we need to have a sort of a balanced conversation about, you know, what is actually, what are we driving with DC exemptions, and is, what is the ROI? And not just the financial ROI, but the livability of our community's ROI as well, anyway. Any other discussion? All's in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And 8.4.2, CS 2024-37, Reserves Year End allocations and Policy Review. Director Brugner, is there anything you want to highlight for council there?
Yes, thank you. Through you to members of council, this policy is before you every year for review this time of the year, as we provide the projections and the basis of what we're going to be developing our next year's budget on the basis of. And so we also fully review the policy at the same time. So this year, we are proposing to add two new reserves. Those reserves are in response to the decision that was made by council in September, giving staff direction to fund future exemptions from the levy, the general levy, for general budget-related services, and the library levy for library-related services. So this adds those two reserves to, under the stabilization category, to ensure that we start building a bank for helping to fund these in the future. If there's any questions, I can take them now.
Questions from council? Councillor Tate?
It's me.
Councillor Gilvase?
I was ready. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Tate, resolved that the recommendations contained in report CS 2024-37 titled Reserves Year End allocations and Policy Review be adopted.
Is there any discussion? All's in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And 8.4.3, CS 2024, CS 2024-38, 2024 to 2025 Housing Insurance Program. Sorry, I didn't know who was going to do this one. Is it? Director Brugner?
Thank you. Yeah, so this, this report's before you, as our annual insurance program has expired, is about to expire for our housing portfolio. I'll remind you that last year, we made a change in our insurance program. We carved out the housing piece, and we had received a quote from the Housing Services Corporation that came in considerably lower than what we could get through our regular provider. And so we made that shift in 2024. It's worked out in our favor, and you can see that the premium renewal is coming in only at 1.8% increase over the prior term. So we're pleased to present this. And again, we haven't had any claims in the past program periods, so that's favorable as well. But in any event, this does not put an overly undue pressure on our 2025 budget, so it's welcome news. And we will have the proposal from intact public entities for the remaining policies of our program, coming in hopefully before the end of the year.
Thank you. Questions from council? Not seeing any now, councillor Tate.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Gilvase, resolved that the recommendation contained in report CS 2024-38 titled 2024-25 Housing Insurance Program be adopted.
Is there any discussion? All's in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And 8.5.1, Public Works, PW 2024-41, 477, Griffin Way Lease Agreement Expansion. Acting Director Abercrombie, is there anything you'd like to highlight for council there?
Not at this time, thank you.
Questions from council on the report? Councillor Tate?
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Acioli, resolved that the recommendations contained in report PW 2024-41 titled 477, Griffin Way Lease Agreement Expansion be adopted.
Is there any discussion? All's in favor? Opposed? That is carried. No unfinished business, no motions or notice of motions, any inquiries for staff? Closed session. Councillor Schaefer?
Thank you, Warden, through you. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Acioli. Council rise and go into a closed session to consider report PW, closed session 2024-42, and a verbal report from the chief administrative officer regarding a position, plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on, or to be carried on by, or on behalf of, the municipality or local board, and labor relations, or employee negotiations.
Any discussion? All's in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And a reminder to leave your mobile phones here. And a reminder to leave your mobile phones here.
It was 11:47.
All right, we are back from closed and consideration of matters arising from closed session. Counselor Petrie.
Thank you, Warden. Through you, moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Martin, resolved that the recommendations contained in the report, PWC S-2024-32, be adopted.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And Counselor Martin.
Thank you, Warden Ryan. Moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Petrie, resolved that the information provided in the verbal report from the chief administrative officer be received.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And bylaws, Counselor Mayberry.
Thank you, Warden. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Martin, resolved that the following bylaws be read first and second time, 6671, 2024 to 67 -- sorry, 6673, 2024 inclusive.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And Counselor Mayberry.
Moved by Mayberry, seconded by Martin, resolved that the following bylaws be given a third and final reading, bylaws 6671, 2024 to 6673, 2024 inclusive.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And adjournment, Counselor Mayberry.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Govey, resolved that the council meeting of October 23rd, 2024 be adjourned until October 23rd, 2024, special medium counsel at 1:30 p.m.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? That is